Okay, good morning and welcome to the August 15th Board of Supervisors for the County of Lake. We will start, call this meeting to order and start with a moment of silence. And I think, I think all of our hearts and minds are in Maui, in Lahaina, and thinking about all the people of Hawaii and the immense suffering, loss of life, loss of culture. It's all something that we can unfortunately relate to. I know probably each of us on the board has been spending a lot of time thinking about that and thinking about the people there. And how much wildfire is impacting all of our lives, from Hawaii to here in California, to Canada, and all around the world, and how it just, every year touches us and almost every week touches us somehow, as we think about the people all around us. And then we've got the loss of our longtime friend Ron Green, who I think each of us has probably been on the radio with him at one point or another. I met him when I was a kid. He was in the Lake County Theater Company with my parents, and so I've known him most of my life. And really, really sad to lose him to West Nile virus. We've been getting the emails. We know that it's in our county, but to have this loss is just, it's something that I don't think that we considered. So I don't know if anyone has more moments of that silence, or wants to speak on anything else? No? Patrick, do you want to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any extra items of consideration?
Chair, we have no extra items.
Okay. So we'll move on to the approval of the consent. It looks like 5.1 will be pulled. Anything else? Supervisor Sabatier?
Madam Chair, I believe we need to do a quick fix on 5.7, and I would like to pull item 5.9 for discussion.
Any items to be pulled from the public? Not seeing anyone in the chambers. And I don't see any hands up in the Zoom room. Okay, so we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 5.1, 5.7, and 5.9.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Is 5.7 a quick fix, or is... Yes? Okay. 5.1, Scott's out in the field. Is that right? Okay. Okay, so we'll go to 5.7. Adopt resolution authorizing the Public Works Director to sign the notice of completion for the Cooper Creek at Witter Springs Road Bridge Replacement Project in the County of Lake California, federal project number B R L O 5914078, bid number 2203, from Public Works. There he is, Director DeLeon.
Good morning. Thank you very much. Apologize, in our notice of completion, the actual form, we have a typo on the date of completion, and so item number one should read the date of completion of the work of improvement here and after described as December 16th, 2022, not 2020. So again, apologize for that typo, but if you can approve that with that correction, I would appreciate it.
Okay. Any comments from the board? I'll open up to the public. Any comments on this item? Okay, bring it back to the board for action.
Okay. One, right?
5.7.
Oh, okay. That's what I thought we were on.
Yeah.
Okay, so off the resolution with the correction of the dates.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
And Supervisor Pricek?
Yes. Okay, and Director DeLeon, I know you have to get out of here today, so let's do 5.9. Sitting as the Board of Directors with the Lake County Watership Protection District, A, waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 38.22, and B, as competitive bidding is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of the goods and services provided, and the bidding process would produce no economic benefit, and B, approve agreement with Alpha Analytic Laboratories, Inc. for water and sediment sampling in the amount of $100,000, and authorize the Water Resources Director to sign the agreement. And pulled by Supervisor Sabatier?
Yes, I pulled this because I disagree with the waiving of the formal bidding process, especially for a five-year contract. There are many other labs. Yes, there might be some differences in the type of service that we receive, or the quality of service that we receive, but there is no way of knowing without going through an RFP process. And so I believe that the contract is necessary, but I would like to go through the formal bidding process.
Director DeLeon?
Well, and I appreciate that. My counterpoint, I suppose, would be, we have a decades-long relationship with Alpha Labs. They provide outstanding, timely service. We have enjoyed that relationship with them, to the point that there are many perks that we get, such as them picking up our samples, and other things that have come along as a result of that relationship. And those types of things are difficult to put in and quantify, and put in a RFP, let alone consultants able to respond to that. Again, longtime relationship with this organization, and we are extremely satisfied with the service that we receive from them. Their costs are commensurate with other labs, and so we recommend that, again, that in accordance with the county's code, that there would be no benefit from an RFP.
And I know that one of my questions that I had asked Director DeLeon was when the last time was that we had done an RFP. I do not believe that there is a known timeframe of when that occurred, unless that's changed since our last interaction.
Yeah, and you're right. We can't find any record of an RFP done for laboratory services. Again, it's something that we've had a contract with them for, you know, for a decade at least.
Okay. Anyone else from the board have a comment? Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, I know that, I know the Water Resources is pretty spread then. Do you think maybe, we do this annually? Director DeLeon, right?
This is a five-year contract.
Five-year, oh, okay. Yeah, so do you think there's a way, within the five years, we can do an RFP for the next one? I understand the need for this time, because I understand the strains on the department as of now. I have a lot of projects that I'm working with on water, with Water Resources, so I'll support it. But do you think in five years, you could work on one for the next time?
Absolutely.
All right, thanks.
Anyone else? Supervisor Green?
Just a question about the term, so, you know, parsing between three and five, so is this a standard contract length, or is it, we went ahead and approved it today, but for a shorter term to kind of goose the idea that an RFP should occur sooner than later on that? I don't want to interrupt any of the hard work Water Resources is doing, and any monitoring requirements that go with that. But to Supervisor Sabatier's point, it's like, yeah, if we don't even have a record of a more recent RFP, I want to take Director DeLeon's statement at face value, that it's pretty unlikely that we're going to get a huge amount of bidders with light quality of service, or even in all these particular niches. There's a lot of niche stuff I see in the staff report. But good governance includes fiscal responsibility. So I guess to Supervisor Sabatier, a question would be, you know, would you feel better about a three versus a five? Or you just want to dig in your heels and say, we should really go out now? Because I'm open to that concern, but splitting the baby in half would be a shorter term of the contract.
So to respond to that, I would be comfortable with a one year, with the expectation of an RFP at the end of the one year. Our purchasing ordinance says if we do an RFP and there's only one bid, that we can do a three-year, or else if there's multiple bids, then let's make sure we keep going through and try to make sure we get the best bang for our buck. I do appreciate relationships, but at the same time, I think the RFP process is specifically there so that we don't basically make use of longtime relationships as to why we're continuing relationships. The relationships we have are for the benefit of the communities we serve, and if there's a potentially better way to utilize our tax dollars and still get the same outcomes, then that's the reason for the process. So I do not believe that it is correct, that it's a unique nature of the goods and services, and that there would be no economic benefit. A quick search can easily find you that there are other labs in the surrounding area, whether that's Napa Sanoma, or another one in Mendocino. So I'm okay with a one year, but a three-year or a five-year, I just think it's too long. By that point, we'll have forgotten, and we'll be right back with the same conversation again.
Yeah. So I agree with the one year. I don't, I understand the relationship and the importance of relationship, but I don't think that it's the reason to not go out to bid for a five-year contract. So I would be, I'm okay with bringing it back with, for one year, and then RFP next year, make sure that we're being responsible. Anybody else?
I guess my question, if the board is gonna, would be willing to move to the one year, would be, would we be able to move forward with that one year today? Lloyd, if we made that type of change? Or Director DeLeon, would that completely change the conversations you've had with the current contractor?
No, that's not going to change. And I appreciate the question. It's not going to change, you know, I would have gone for three, but if the board, the board wants to limit this contract to one year, then we can do that. I totally respect the thought here, and the reason you want to go back out to RFP. RFPs cost time, both at the county and with the consultant. And while, yes, there are other labs, I think the track record of this one, and the services that they provide, they are unique. There aren't any other labs that have the personal touch of stopping by your office and picking the equipment up, or the samples up. And while other labs will certainly do that, they're going to charge you for that, but because Alpha Labs is in Lake County performing work for other agencies, we have that ability to make sure that, you know, that they come by and get that. Other labs are going to cost more money. Whether the lab is more expensive, or the staff time to put samples in a box and ship them, those, that takes time, and that's additional expense. It may not be direct in that the bill from the consultant is not going to be reflective of that, but the fact is, there is going to be more time, there's going to be more time with staff trying to get this stuff boxed up and sent off. The other thing that I think is important, because Alpha Labs is relatively close, they're over in Ukiah, many of the samples that we take have time, they're time-sensitive. They have to be tested within a certain number of hours. We have experienced, just in the recent past, samples that were delayed in the mail, they weren't picked up in time, et cetera, and the samples were rendered no good, and we had to re-sample because the labs didn't get the sample in time, and they didn't get the work done in time. We don't have that problem with Alpha Labs. So there are some intangibles here, that as I already mentioned, there's some intangibles that are very difficult to put in an RFP, and difficult for consultants to respond to. I, again, respectfully request, I'd be happy to do a RFP. Staff is, we're waiting on your decision, so we can send some samples out. So I'd really like to see this approved for three years, but if one year is what your board decides on, then we'll work with that. Thank you for the opportunity to respond.
Okay. Well, thank you, all good points, and I think all of those concerns can be waited when you have your RFP, to find out, you know, which lab is closer, and who can perform the services, but at the end of the day, we have to adhere to our policy. So I'm still okay with one year. We don't want to hold up any processing that needs to happen right now. I think putting it out three years goes against our policy, and I'm not okay with that. Supervisor Crandall?
I hear you on that. I'm okay with two years, because one year comes quick. And again, I know the strain on the department as it is, when it comes to the projects they're dealing with. So I mean, I'd be willing to go two if that would help, but I mean, if it's the will of the board to go one, I get it. I understand the policy. But I know that also, we have a lot of legacy issues that kind of are backing us up either way, so if we allow more time, like to see the RFP be procured in two years, if possible.
Okay, I'm going to open it up for public input. Do we have anyone in the chambers or in the Zoom room to comment on this? Not seeing anyone. Okay. Bring it back to the board. Supervisor Sabatier?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agreement to, let me make sure I'm reading the right thing here, to conduct laboratory analysis services for Water Resources and Watershed Protection District with Alpha Analytical Laboratories, Inc. for $100,000 per fiscal year, with an amendment to the term to terminate on July 1st, 2024, for a one-year contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Motion passes. Thank you, Director DeLeon.
Thank you.
We have our 9:07 guest here, Pet of the Week, Animal Care and Control. Who do we have today?
Good morning. Today, I'm Officer Guard. This is Morgan. She's a three-year-old lab Irish setter. She's friendly with dogs, and before I, we didn't really test her with cats yet, but before I came, there was a cat, someone dumped, and she was really friendly with them. So it worked out. She loaded right up in the truck. She's a little sketchy on this linoleum floor, but other than that, she's a really good dog. But if anyone's interested, we're located at 4949 Hellbush Drive. You can give us a call at 707-263-0278. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys have one today. Yeah, it's on the linoleum.
He's so cute. Okay, our 9:06 a.m. public input item. Do we have anyone here with public input? No one in the chambers, and I'm not seeing anyone in the Zoom room. Okay, we can do 5.1. Sitting as the Lake County Air Quality Management District Board of Directors, consideration of memorandum of understanding, MOU, by and between the County of Mendocino and Lake County Air Quality Management District for Air Pollution Control Officer, APCO duties effective August 1st, 2023, Air Quality Management District. And do we have Doug?
He might be on, I just texted.
We'll come back to this one?
Yes, he does have to leave at 2:00.
Okay. So we can do 7.2? Are you ready for that? Consideration of an employment agreement between the County of Lake and Noemec Duhan, M.D., Ph.D., M.P.H., and for Public Health Officer Services, in the annually renewable not to exceed amount of 290, what?
We need to take that item up after closed session.
Oh, after closed session, that's right. Okay. 7.3?
Doug's online.
Doug's online. Okay, we will go back to 5.1. I'll read it again. Sitting as the Air Quality Management District Board of Directors, consideration of memorandum of understanding, MOU, by and between County of Mendocino and Lake County Air Quality Management District for Air Pollution Control Officer, APCO duties effective August 1st, 2023. There's Doug. Good morning.
Good morning. So I guess, I don't know how to start this one, but you know, this is a continuation of the grant, or the MOU that we've had in place for, I think this is our, we're at a year and a half now, going on to two years would be this agreement. There's been extensive recruitment activity, and still, they've had no luck in hiring an APCO at Mendocino County, so we are now looking into some other longer-term possibilities with Northern Soma, with other districts, so. So this is just a continuation of that MOU until we can work out something more permanent.
Did you pull this one? Who pulled this one? Was there a date? Is that what I heard?
No, I had decided overnight that I wouldn't be pulling it, so I didn't mention it. I thought there was another reason behind it. But while Doug is here, Director Gerhart, quick question for you. Has there been any in the soliciting for candidates to fill the position, has there been any increases in the potential salary to make it more attractive? What exactly has changed in all of the iterations that you've been involved in to try and recruit and fill that position?
Yeah. Well, the first recruitments were done at their previous salary range. They did readjust the salary once, and then a couple more recruitments, with no luck there. They have recently, three months ago, hired a executive recruiting firm to assist with the recruitment, and we are now on our second round of applicants through that process. So that will be reviewed in the next week or two, to see if there's any viable applicants there. So the next option is, they have done a new salary survey for the APCO, and the comparable positions, they looked specifically at the Air Pollution Control Officer position with comparable counties and air districts, and they are fairly, you know, underpaying for what you can, you know, what pay is out there for other positions that have a lot less responsibility. So as I kind of put in the memo, with teleworking and things like that, recruitment has become much more difficult, because people can work remotely, they don't have to be, relocate to specific areas. So the pay that they get, they can live in Sacramento and work for LA, and vice versa, so it's, it creates a lot more challenge to get someone that will work in a rural area. So, so yes, they've looked at all those things. They have increased the pay, gone to the executive recruiter, and they're considering another pay increase if this doesn't pan out in the near future, so.
Well, I hadn't asked that question to you before this, so I'm glad to hear that they have at least made the effort to change what the position looks like for those that are filling out the application. So appreciate that. My only reason for having a conversation with C.A.O. Parker to discuss this is, I know that the first iteration of this that came to us, which got changed at the last 11th hour, was until, I think, October 1st or September 1st, I forget what the date was, but now we're up to January 31st, 2024. And I know that you and I have discussed this, but I just have concerns with potential burnout, and just, this has been going on for a long time, and I can't do the job for Mendocino to get that position filled, but I am concerned with the amount of work that you are doing. I don't think that you're missing anything here in Lake County, but it's nice when you have one job, and you can go home and enjoy the quality of life. So that was my only concerns. I hope that we can talk about this a little sooner than January 31st, to figure out where we are, and hopefully we'll get the good news that they fill the position, but at this moment, I will continue to play along.
All right, thank you for that, and I do hope that within a couple months, we will have at least a applicant to, you know, consider hiring, or some other alternative long-term plan in place that I can bring to the board for discussion, so, and give you an update on what's happening. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have anyone from the public? Not seeing anyone. Okay, so I will bring it back to the board. Oh, Supervisor Green?
Yeah, good question. So this looks like it is brought to us in the staff report as an extension. Looking at the contract itself, it looks like an original, and it doesn't reference the prior contract. And under the term of this contract, it's just basically a one-and-done until January 31, and I don't see anything in this contract language that would, you know, permit extension. I guess it's implied that all contracts can be extended, so just the form of this contract kind of threw me a little bit, just because I don't see it in the form as an extension of the prior contract that was executed last year. And to Supervisor Sabatier's comments, yeah, I am concerned about burnout too, and I think that the six-month term is very hopeful, given some of the prior statements about recruiting difficulties, and just the general speed of recruit, recruitments and placements in Mendocino County. So just want to make sure this contract, if we execute today, is in fact an extension of the prior contract, and that we leave enough wiggle room in this to extend it past January if we need to.
Lloyd?
Yes, so the prior contract, in essence, expired on July 31st, 2023. That prior contract, didn't have any provisions related to possible extensions, or, well, extensions to that prior contract? So that has expired, and so effectively, this is the one before your board today, is a new contract, but in essence, it effectively extends the prior contract that expired, and this new contract is effective August 1st, 2023.
Okay.
And then under number three, then, the term, again, there's no language clearly authorizing a possible extension. Is that something we need to put in there?
No. We can just deal with that when we get to the end of the term. It's, I mean, we've been operating this for a long time, so hopefully this is the last one. Okay. Action?
I move to approve the agreement between County Mendocino and Lake County Air Quality Management District for Air Pollution Control Officer duties effective August 1st, 2023, or by and between the County Mendocino.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Hang in there.
Thank you.
7.3? How about our 910 item? 910. Oh, sorry. That's all right. Thank you. Okay, 6.3, 910 AM, consideration of the June 30th, 2023, Report of Lake County Pooled Investments, Treasurer-Tax Collector, Patrick Sullivan.
I'm here presenting today the report of investments. Usually I have Carlos Oblitas from Chandler Asset Management with me. Due to scheduling conflicts within the reporting period, I will be presenting this by myself today. If there are additional questions or additional detail about Chandler's operations, I can definitely refer those questions out and get back to your board on this. Just a moment, I'm gonna share my screen. So I was gonna start with a few general economic updates that are relevant to our portfolio. Interest rates have continued to remain volatile as the Fed has raised rates yet again. There was another issue, none of this really directly impacts our portfolio, but Fitch did downgrade, did issue a downgrade for the United States, but all of our bonds, everything we hold is still high-quality, we're holding strong names, strong positions, so there's no direct impact to us as a result of that. These are some of the charts that Chandler's included, just regarding employment and labor. I'm gonna skip ahead to some of the ones that are more relevant to us here, and that are the bond yields. Just continuing to note that generally what we're investing in is heavily concentrated in bonds, both government and corporate bonds and other related securities, so those rates are continuing to rise, so we're benefiting from that significantly. As those rates go up, we're constantly reinvesting into the market as we have maturities come due. When we're buying back in, we're typically picking up a much higher rate, so we'll get to that during our presentation, but you're gonna see our portfolio is sort of mirroring this general curve you're seeing with US Treasury notes. This gives an idea of where we are at. This is our consolidated reporting, so this is including both what's managed by Chandler and what's included in our other accounts that are managed directly by Treasury, and it's a combination of the two. You'll note that our average maturity is continuing to shrink, that's because we're picking up significant benefit by staying shorter on a lot of our different investments. The rate of return for shorter-term US Treasuries, for instance, is significantly higher than long-term. The other, the other side effect there is that we, in this period, this is our tightest period for cash management, because we're not receiving tax dollars yet, those property tax payments aren't coming in, so we typically want to keep a side pot of money in a shorter position where we can access it more easily. So that's why I believe last time it was raised that we were bringing, we were putting together a liquidity portfolio. We're keeping some of our money just in a side pot with shorter US Treasuries and other federal notes that are giving us a higher rate of return and also keeping it available to us, so that's one of the key differences. That's why you're continuing to see this purchase yield go up compared to March, and you're seeing the duration go down. The other thing I'd note is just that market yield gives you some idea of where our portfolio would be, like if we were to create this portfolio today with everything we're holding, that gives you an idea of what we'd be earning, but because we're laddered and investing as we, as maturities come due, we're slowly creeping up, so our purchase yield, if the rate environment stays the same, is gonna slowly come up to match that market yield. This is a comparison between the March quarterly report and the June quarterly report of the positions that we hold, the types of securities that the county pool is in. I don't think you're gonna see any significant differences here. The primary difference I would raise is that when you look at June 2023, see that 10.7% in cash, that is an increase of about 2% over last quarter. What I'd keep in mind is that it is technically cash, but these, this cash is held in an instrument with Wells Fargo as part of our operational accounts. Each day we do a sweep into a money market fund, so we are earning interest on a daily basis, and we just pull out what we need to basically make our bills. To cover accounts payable, we pull that out, otherwise the rest of the money actually remains invested. At, we're achieving, I think, a 5.2% rate of return on that, so at this point, we have no funds that are uninvested, all of our funds are earning a rate of return. The other difference you'll see is LEAF. We are trimming down our use of LEAF, that's the State Treasurers Fund, the local area investment fund, their rate of return is a lot lower than what we can achieve elsewhere, so we're using that money to cover, the money we have in that account right now, we're using it to cover expenses and sort of running it down, and then over the next year, we expect that account to pick up a higher rate, and we'll probably start using it again. But I would just continue to expect us slowly drop our use of LEAF until that rate environment This chart gives an idea of the duration of our holdings, and this just is a visual of what I already stated, that we've increased our liquidity, partially for cash management purposes and because we can achieve a higher rate of return. So when you compare June to March, you're just seeing that we have a lot of instruments that are shorter in duration than we previously were. And again, that's our purchase yield, so like I was saying, you're sort of seeing a mirror to that national trend where we're gonna continue to rise. If the rate environment does not change, we will still continue to rise until we sort of become matched up with that Fed rate. So I don't expect any significant change in the quarters to come unless there's a significant change nationally, otherwise I would expect we will just continue this trend until we sort of cap out at that market yield that you saw earlier. In here, these are the portfolio holdings, they're attached for your review, if there's any questions about them, I'm happy to answer, or I'm happy to get the answer. Let's see. The other chart I wanted to share is, I know we previously had requests for this, so I'm just continuing to present it. This is the historical trend in terms of interest. These numbers, again, are different than what Chandler has, because Chandler is looking at it on a accrual basis. This is a reflection of what's actually being deposited, the cash as it's actually being received from the banks and from the bond payments that we're getting. So this goes back to 2021, which is the year that we initiated these changes to our investment program, and running through now, so we're just continuing to increase. There is a significant jump from last quarter, part of that is from the trend I was describing about interest rates, part of it is that we did restructure our banking, and this is the first quarter where that's fully in effect, so we're picking up an additional several hundred thousand dollars from that restructuring each term by eliminating banking fees and using that sweep vehicle. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them, anything your board may have.
Thank you. This is, I love seeing these updates. This was not a lot of work, but it was important work, and it's, this is how we're moving our counting forward, so it's really exciting to see these updates, the quarterly updates. Supervisor Sabatier?
So two things, I have not received a phone call from a school district complaining as of late, so I appreciate, I appreciate what you've done to change that, but I have not heard how happy they are with the amounts that they're receiving, and obviously the numbers you're showing us is the overall pool, which includes the school districts as well as the fire districts. Hoping that during our final budget that you can provide for the fiscal year, because I think this is the first fiscal year we've done this brand-new investment in full, I think we started in the January before this current one. If you can let us know what we, as the agency of Lake County, have taken in from this change, just so that we can see how it's impacting our budget, I think that's an important thing for us to know.
Yes, I can work with the Otter's Office and Admin on putting that together for budget.
Final budget?
Yeah. We haven't done the apportionment yet for this last quarter, we probably won't be doing that for a few more weeks, but I would think by the beginning of September, we'd have those figures done.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Any comments from the board? Supervisor Crandall?
Supervisor Sabatier, you mentioned fire districts as well? Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Just one question, I was listening to when you had the chart where the, actually pie graph, special sector distribution, and you were mentioning LEAF, and that you were gonna, you're gonna incrementally decrease it, right, and stop using it, and I think you said you were just gonna reallocate it to, do you know where? You said something, but I...
So for now, we'll probably keep it in our operational account at Wells Fargo, because we can pick up a higher rate. What happens is that LEAF, they're invested, they sort of have a similarly structured portfolio to us, so it slowly creeps up like how ours is, so LEAF can be really beneficial when interest rates are declining.
Okay.
Because they've locked in their rates for the future, so we can put our money back in there and pick up that rate. Right now, because we can achieve higher rates elsewhere, basically with Wells Fargo and the sweep vehicle, or in the liquidity portfolio we're running with Chandler, we can get probably 2% more than that, and so I think we've taken LEAF down from, we had about 65 million in there at the beginning of the year, I think we're down to about 27 or 28, so we're just gonna run that, continue to run that out, and then I would foresee picking up use of that again in the next year or two.
Thank you, Pat. I understand it better now.
Well, before we diversified, the majority of the holdings were in LEAF.
That's, yeah, we were maxed out in LEAF, they allowed 75 million in there, so we were, we were holding a significant amount of money in there, and there are benefits to LEAF, it's accessible the same day, so for cash management, there's, there's a major plus, it's just that I think right now, the way we've restructured, we're able to take advantage of other opportunities.
Well, now it's a tool and not just standard practice.
Yep, it's just one more thing we can look at.
Right.
I think our previous pie was two different things. It was LEAF and money market, and that was not exactly the diversity we were looking for.
That's why we were making a hundred thousand a quarter, not 2 million. Okay. Any other comments?
Just thank you for the updates, it's great to hear this news as we're moving forward. Small changes, obviously, and this was a big one that we made, but the advantages being brought to Lake County are big, we see that every quarter, so, yeah, thank you for everybody, and obviously, we said, we knew this was something we needed to address, and we're seeing the positive effects of not just doing the same old thing and moving things forward in Lake County, so greatly appreciate it and greatly appreciate you, Patrick, and everyone working on this project.
Okay, do we have any comments from the public? Not seeing anyone in the chambers coming up, if anyone in Zoom? Nope. Okay. Well, thank you so much, Patrick, this was just a presentation.
Yes, there's no action, your board can accept the report, but I...
Okay, and we're looking forward to the budget item then, yes?
Do they need to accept it?
Well, in the past, there was either consensus or by motion, last presentation, if it is a presentation, then there's no action needed.
I think I, there is a recommended action to accept the report.
Oh, okay.
I move to accept the report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and we'll look forward to seeing the numbers during budgets in a couple...
Thank you.
...next month. Okay.
Did we need to add the date on that? There was a date in there on June 30th, 2023, so just a question.
I think it's understood from the memo and the report itself for purposes of...
Okay, just one make sure.
Yes.
Okay. Item 6.4, 945 AM, consideration of a resolution supporting the addition of Molok Luyuk Condor Ridge to the Berry SS Snow Mountain, Snow Mountain National Monument. Supervisor Crandall?
Thank you. I've been wanting to bring this forward for quite some time, I've been working with the Tulioomi Group, Sandra Schubert and some other staff members have been reaching out to me also. I was going to testify in February, however, that was during the, well, '22, that's when I lost my mom, so I wasn't able to, but, but we've been working on this for quite some time, actually Congressman Thompson, or Garamendi initially, when he was representing us, was who brought it forward along with Congressman Thompson, supporting him in it, and so the proposal aims to add the Condor Ridge, or previously known as Walker Ridge, to the Berry SS Snow Mountain Monument, and, and they've named it to Molok Luyuk because that is what the Yochi de Hay tribe designates it as, and I'm pretty sure, or I, you know, I'm not confident in what Kletzel de Hay calls it, and that's the wind tune in Williams. So, but either way, really positive in my opinion. There was a project, I don't know if you're familiar with, in 2019, called the Walker Ridge Energy Project, which proposed to have some windmills in the area, and so I know that Congressman Garamendi and I, in talking about this, we weren't really favorable for that, so when we seen the, when I seen the Berry SS Snow Mountain Monument to include Molok Luyuk, I was really happy to see it, I've been on different social media posts and in the Press Democrat, talking about the support that I have for it. It is a historical travel path for the Pomo and the wind tune back and forth, and so that's why I am glad that it is in the language of the Yochi de Hay tribe, because it's more or less, if we're looking at it from a jurisdictional point, I would say that it would be more their area, however, in pre-contact, it would just be an area that we all traveled, but it is what it is. I also know that the tribe out in, would be Spring Valley, which was called at one time Losil, was probably, was actually the connecting of the route, so that's where they can travel, or whatever the case may be. So, really, really excited about the resolution, hoping that we can show support and see if it passes this year in, I think it is, what, S 683 and HR 1396, and so we'll see how that goes. Yeah, that's what I have from there, I know there's a map that shows the area included, and so it's actually somewhat adjacent to the Indian Valley Reservoir, so, and, yeah, that's, that's what I have, and I'll go from there.
Well, thank you for bringing this, this is exciting. I have a question, it said in one of the letters that the co-management is going to be, co-management requirement is the first in the nation, and I was just wondering if you could elaborate on that.
So I think what a lot of new initiatives that are taking place is counties and governments co-managing with tribes. Tribes historically have tribal ecological knowledge, and so I know that there's other counties and other tribal governments that are trying to work to show that they do prescribe burning, that's one prime example, but also caring for different plants, caring for the land the way they used to harvest specific medicines or designate specific medicines, and so I know in talking with some folks in a different state, there was a mention of, well, we need to figure out how we can make these farmlands go back to the way they were 100 years ago, and, you know, in discussing that, I was like, well, 100 years ago of the same management and how you tended to it has brought it to where we're at now, so why don't we go pre-contact? You know, so I think that's the concept in co-management, I know that we've been talking about it in different committees, I know with the Middle Creek, we've talked about looking at that with different tribes, and so, yeah, just, that's, that's a lot of it, not to mention the cultural resources aspect of it, I know that that's been a really challenging initiative brought forward by the, you know, state and federal government to ensure that those types of relationships are happening. In that way, it's, if a tribe is tending to it with lack of county resources or lack of federal resources or federal oversight, I know at times they look at people in the communities or counties in different areas are frustrated with some of the ways that federal government tends to land, I know that's been brought, tends to the land, and so I know that's been brought up before, so I think with the co-management, it just adds another tool to the belt or more eyes on the land and, you know.
And expands capacity, because so many times, that's the biggest hurdle, is who's gonna manage the land, where's the capacity coming from, and so I think the co-management team approach is, it's brilliant.
I hope that answers one of the...
Yes, thanks. Supervisor Green?
Thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you for bringing this forward. When I was down at CSAC a couple of weeks ago, I did speak with one of the supervisors from Colusa, Supervisor Bell, who informed me that their board had been working on this issue from their side of the Hill and had some concerns with the designation here. And so I asked that their letters be provided to the board, and there may be some on, on the public days too. So, and if I read the August 1st letter, right, it appears that at least one of the bills, S 683, has already been amended to remove the Colusa County portion of this proposed designation. And, and that's fine as far as it goes. They can make their own calls. I guess my only question is, and I'm looking at our draft resolution, so this speaks in broad terms of all of Molok Luyuk, I'm gonna mess that up, so I'll say Walker Ridge right now.
Yeah.
But if, if this board is gonna express support, I think we can and probably should limit it to our support for designation of lands that fall within our jurisdiction. And that's not to say that a more regional approach to this is not appropriate. I can clearly see on the draft map that they have a, a larger vision for the expansion of this monument. But we also have pretty good information now that the Colusa County Board is not into that designation right now, and we want to respect their process. And, and, and so it's, it's unclear in the draft resolution. I think it could be interpreted that we would support the, the full expansion, including the green parts on this map that would extend into Colusa County. But just a question for Supervisor Crandall, if, if there's any language, clarifying language that you'd be willing to insert there, just clarify that we are, we are limiting our comments to those lands within the County of Lake, or if you, if we, if this board wishes to consider, and if you desire to signal a larger vision that we also advocate for the expansion of the monument, including those territories that are in Colusa County. So I just wanted to highlight this previous action by the Colusa Board and just bring it to the board. If there's any nuance, we would want to add to your resolution.
Okay, so I, I'm not worried about considering any other language. It's addition to National Monuments, which is brought forward by Representatives Garimendi and Thompson and the Senators Padilla and Feinstein. So I would like to support them. I feel good in supporting them on this. Having something in common with them is great in a decision-making capacity. I know there's other things that we have issues with, with our representatives. So for me, I wouldn't mind helping support on this. And so I understand Colusa County's concerns. I've talked to a couple of representatives myself. And so I understand that. I mean no disrespect to them, but ultimately, this is essentially going to be done in a capacity where it's a federal, you know, federal capacity, so.
Okay. Supervisor Spatier?
Appreciate the comment from Supervisor Green. Hadn't really gone through that thought process in considering this. And I can't help but think of the Lake Pillsbury situation, where we have other people from other counties telling us what to do in our county, and we're not exactly pleased with that situation. But I also do want to provide support to this and trying to bridge the two perspectives. The only time that Colusa is mentioned is in paragraph two in the whereas, can we just say, can we just strike in Lake and Colusa Counties and just say be added to Berryessah Snow Mountain National Monument?
I like that, yeah.
With, that way, we're not, we're not inserting ourselves in the decision-making of another county, therefore standing by our values that we don't want others to do that to us either. I appreciate the comment, and I think that way it kind of clears us of that, but we're still supporting the same basic concept.
I like that. Thank you.
Okay.
So just deletion of Colusa County there in the second whereas?
Or Lake and-
I would say Lake and Colusa. That way, we're still talking about the same thing, but we're not imposing ourselves onto Colusa.
Okay. I'm in agreement with that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
So, strike in Lake and Colusa Counties.
Yes.
So Molok Luyuk be added to Berryessah Snow Mountain.
Unless I missed another section where Colusa is mentioned, but I don't believe
That's it, when I was looking through.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll open it up for public comment. If anyone in the chambers? You can go up to the microphone, state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Brendan Wills. I'm representing the California Native Plant Society. We're a nonprofit with a goal of preserving California's native flora through science, education, policy, and outreach. On just a few thousand acres of land, Molok Luyuk contains nearly 500 native plant species, meaning that on 0.02% of the acreage of California, excuse me, is home to 7% of our flora. This is an amazing amount of diversity in such a small area. The high level of diversity is a result of a variety of factors that have resulted in many habitats along the ridge. One of, some of these factors are due to geology. The northern portion of Molok Luyuk contains one of the state's most extensive outcroppings of serpentine, our stake rock. The serpentine habitats are home to many species that live only on these unique soils, many of which are rare. These serpentine habitats are generally shrub-dominated chaparral, intermixed with rocky barrens and meadow-like habitats. Heading south along the ridge, habitats less influenced by serpentine are likely to be home to oak woodlands and forests. Another factor influencing diversity is topography. Rising up from Bear Valley, the ridge quickly rises approximately 2,000 feet in elevation, spanning several miles, and creating varied terrain among the many seeps and springs that feed the valley. Each of these habitats provide the opportunity to support Molok Luyuk's nearly 500 native plant species. Due to its proximity to the coast, the Central Valley, Northern Mountain ranges, and the Bay Area, the ridge is a home to a unique mix of plants from a wide range of habitats. In a sense, Molok Luyuk is a melting pot of species influenced by this mix of eco-regions. California as a whole is a globally important place for plant diversity and is one of 36 global hotspots. This designation is driven not only by the thousands of native plant species, but by the number of endemic and rare species found here. Molok Luyuk is its own hotspot within the hotspot that is California. Of the nearly 500 species found here, 43 tax are rare plants, making the ridge one of the most important epicenters for rare plants in the state and beyond. It is of utmost importance that, that this diversity is properly managed in conjunction with the rest of the National Monument. Thank you Supervisor Crandall for introducing this resolution, and thank you all for your time today.
Thank you. Have anyone else?
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Mark Green, and I'm here representing Calwild. Calwild is California's preeminent voice for conservation of wild public lands. Since 1976, we've played a key role in protection of 13 million acres of wildlands and more than 1,500 linear miles of wild and scenic rivers, resulting, among many other benefits, in billions of dollars in revenue to local economies. A Headwaters Economics report into the economic impact of national parks and monuments states that visitation and spending directly related to nearby public lands annually contributes billions to regional economies while creating hundreds of thousands of private sector jobs. It notes that National Park Service units, including monuments, positively impact gateway communities in a variety of ways such as visitor spending, quality of life, and attracting workers and businesses. Despite its great cultural and ecological importance, Molok Luyuk has been threatened repeatedly since the 1970s by mining, road construction, and energy development proposals. Excuse me. Currently, the BLM lacks proper resourcing to effectively manage recreation and other uses in the area. If Molok Luyuk is added to the National Monument, the BLM will be required to develop a first-ever management plan for the area. And under the agency's budget structure, lands included in the National Monument receive more management funding than they do the unprotected BLM lands. A plan developed with input from Lake County residents and others and increased funding for BLM could radically improve conditions on Molok Luyuk for the benefit of people and of wildlife. We urge you to vote for Supervisor Eddie Crandall's proposed resolution in favor of expanding the Berryessah Snow Mountain National Monument today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. Thank you to Supervisor Crandall for bringing this resolution forward and for all of your time. My name is Sandra Schubert, and I'm the Executive Director of Tulioomi. Tulioomi is a regional nonprofit that works throughout the region with communities to do projects on the ground as well as advocate for certain projects. We worked with you to establish Berryessah Snow Mountain National Monument and have been working since 2006 to protect Molok Luyuk. We own property abutting the ridge on both sides. On Lake County, we have a 1,260-acre ranch, and we have a 1,500-acre conservation easement on the other side in Colusa County. We have four property owners abutting the property, including three in Colusa County, one within an holding. All are supporting protecting the area. We see, we're working, we see the effects up there. And while I understand you guys wanting to respect Colusa, it's an arbitrary line along a ridge, and you'll only be protecting part of it. All the illegal activities, and I encourage you to go up and look at all the illegal OHV use and shooting, will still happen. And that imaginary line on the top of the ridge is not gonna stop anybody who wants to cross over. So there are many reasons to protect this area. It's a ecological, cultural, historical treasure. It supports, as everybody said, multiple habitats, a variety of wildlife, and it's renowned for its remarkable geology. Molok Luyuk is steeped in thousands of years of rich history and culturally significant, both sides of Molok Luyuk. The Yochi Dehei Windtoon Nation, the Kletzel Dehei Windtoon Nation, and we've been told the Kechiel are coming out with a letter, are all supporting the renaming and protecting all of Molok Luyuk. That is what they have asked for. Ensuring the federally registered tribes can co-manage is extremely important. It honors the cultural significance. As people have talked about, management planning improves when you're part of a monument. So if we only protect part of Molok Luyuk, only part of that is gonna be in the management plan, the rest of it will remain unprotected. We have, we have letters, I don't have our support book with us due to technical difficulty in printing and transmitting it. We have letters from hundreds of supporters, tribes, businesses, elected officials, organizations, individuals, 950 people, 9,500 people on a petition already that we're working on this growing, hundreds of postcards, letter to the editors, op-eds, emails, and videos, all in support. I will comment, I was at the Colusa Board of Supervisors hearing. Supervisor Bell is under the impression that there is a provision in the legislation that will allow Secretary Holland to add any, any land she ever wants to Molok Luyuk. That's the opposition she voiced at the meeting. That is incorrect. We listened to a lot of misinformation. People said it was a private land grab. It's all public lands. People said its attempt to bring the northwest spotted owl down this way has no effect on the ESA. I urge you guys strongly to support adding all of Molok Luyuk.
Thank you. Your time is up. Okay. Do we have any other comments? I'm not seeing anyone in the chambers. Let me check the Zoom room. Don't see any hands up in Zoom. Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Spatier?
I just want to add one thing for the future. I know that you and I, Supervisor Crandall, have had conversations with both BLM and the U.S. Department of Forestry to try to move things forward with advertising and setting up destinations within the National Monument. A lot of those things have been slow coming. We have the signs that came out. I want to say that was 2019, maybe 2020. We were told that we would receive at our visitor centers a lot of pamphlets and a lot of materials to be able to hand out to visitors. We were promised some sort of like kiosks that would be put into our, our parks. I think that the next step to think about is, hopefully this goes through, the Senate bill, and then maybe advocating for funding to help market this destination, because I think it's woefully under-marketed to the state of California, let alone those that are outside coming into California. That's my only worry about this, is we have a beautiful National Monument. It is, the majority of it is in Lake County, and yet the advertisement for it is, in my opinion, could be a lot better. And so I want to make sure that we take advantage of those things if we can.
Okay. No, I agree. And, yeah, the, one of the letters of support was from the Legislative Action Office for Rights for Riding and Racing, OHV, and I was glad to see that they supported this as well. And, and they highlighted a lot of problems with illegal activity and folks driving up there dumping and not being enough oversight or whatever the case may be. So, so, yeah, I just was appreciative to see that. But another thing I was thinking, oh, the timeline. I added the timeline that shows, I know that, Sandra, you mentioned letters. The timeline, it highlights and also references, if you click on some of the blue links, you'll see where, where some of the letters and where the websites and whatnot are, will reference some of the support. So, so, yeah, no, I'm excited to do this. And that's really all I have, unless there's any other questions from the board. I'm willing to offer the resolution.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just want to respond briefly. Again, I appreciate the friendly amendment that's made to clarify the language. And when we're talking environmental restoration, I guess a county line could be an arbitrary line, but it's not to us. I mean, we have jurisdictional issues. When we're advocating for anything, we have to advocate for the lands and the people that fall within our county, and we have to defer to the good judgment or lack thereof, and there's, reasonable people can disagree, but we have a position statement that was taken by Colusa. So I want to reassert that we're gonna support, certainly gonna support this as far as it goes in Lake County. And if anything, we can take this opportunity to say, you know, we're not gonna tell Colusa County what to do, but we've had good success with this monument in Lake County, very good success. And we're interested in growing capacity, good management to address some of the harms you talked about, certainly I have BLM lands in my district that could use some good planning too and some good harm reduction, but it's baby steps. So I want to be respectful to our neighbors to the east while also giving them a nudge to say, dip your toes in the water, it's not that scary. And maybe Williams as the gateway to Berryessah National Monument doesn't roll off the tongue easily, and it may not strike you as the first thing you would when you go to Williams. But there is value in the monument that has grown up here in Lake County. And so I just want to do that. And I want to respect our process and what we can and should lobby for, and just kind of nudge Colusa County saying, you know, it's, it's gonna be okay. So.
I want to apologize, I made a mistake. It's the Powtun, not the Windtoon. So, yeah. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure. But, but, yeah, that's, that was a mistake on my part.
So the second whereas, does that need to be changed?
Let's see.
The Yochi Dehei Windtoon Nation?
Could I clarify that? They're Powtun peoples?
Wait, can we come?
You have to come up to the microphone and state your name, please.
Hi, Sandra Schubert with Tulioomi. This is how it's been explained to me. They are the Powtun peoples, but when they did treaties, they added the name Windtoon.
That's right.
So it's, it's, all three nations are Powtun peoples, but they're also Windtoon nations, if that helps.
Thank you.
I get it. Thank you. Right. So with that, I offer the resolution, unless there's something else to, sorry.
With amendments?
As amended.
Oh, yeah, with the amendment to strike Lake and Colusa Counties.
All right. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Spatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
And Supervisor Pisgah?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you for joining us today.
I, I do have a question about the follow-up to the next steps. It requests staff to submit letters to President Biden as well as our representatives. Will those letters be coming through here for approval to submit, or will those just occur and only be staff-related?
What is your wish?
I, I was just curious. I don't have a specific wish. I was just curious about the next steps.
You mean the, the letters being sent to each and every different, what are you asking?
Like- Well, it says in here that once we pass the resolution, letters will be sent over. Is it just a quick letter saying, here's the resolution, or is there a different letter that's gonna?
That's, that's that, yeah.
Okay. I just was curious as to what exactly was gonna be that interaction.
Yeah, no, it's simply sending it.
Thank you. Help to clarify.
Okay, we're gonna take a little break, come back at 10:20. Okay, we're going to take a little break, come back at 10:20.
All right. Still have coffee? I don't, I'm out.
All right, welcome back. We're going to move on to item 7.3, consideration of updated applicant interview travel expense reimbursement policy, and...
Ms. Samick is on her way.
Okay. It'll be right here. There she is, come on up.
Pam Samick, HR Director. Today, I'm here to present an updated applicant interview expense policy. Currently, only the Board of Supervisors has applicant interviews, and we would like to change that to include senior management, hard-to-fill positions. We get many requests from applicants that were asking to travel out here, and currently we only have the ability to do it if they're interviewing with the Board. So we would like to recommend a change to all management and hard-to-fill of $1,500, and we'd like to increase the reimbursement process from 30 days to 60 days to allow the applicant a little extra time. Any questions?
Supervisor Spatier?
So I had, hello. I had a conversation with Ms. Samick yesterday, and there are times where the, and it's, it's, you can't make it specific because you can't control what the cost of airplane tickets are, you can't control what the cost of travel and lodging and all that stuff is, and so it's kind of sporadic, but sometimes the $1,500 doesn't cover it. And so I want to make sure that, especially if we're looking for like department heads or managers, that we provide the best experience possible. And there's a certain risk to it if we're not covering the whole thing, that they're kind of gambling, saying, you know, hopefully I get this job, oh, I just spent an extra $300 or whatever it is, and I didn't get the job. But we want to make sure to fill those positions. For example, today, we have a hard-to-fill position that we're finally filling in, and we know what kind of burden that has been on us to deal with that. And so the way that I was looking at it was, it's also awkward for me that it's across the board, hard-to-fill positions. Positions are from department head to manager to other positions within the staffing structure, and some of them have higher levels of requirements than others. And I feel like there needs to be maybe looking at a tiered system, where for example, tiered one would be department head management, a maximum of 2,000, to make sure we do cover what those costs are so that they can have that positive experience so that we can get a better chance of getting yes. Tier two, hard-to-fill positions, but those with high-skill requirements such as bachelor's degree or master's degree or whatever those high-skill requirement would be, set that at the 1,500, and then tier three would be the rest of the hard-to-fill positions that do not fit within the other two tiered categories. It just seems weird to spend the same amount for somebody that has maybe 50% less of a salary. It becomes of a higher level of proportion of their salary that we're spending trying to help with their travel needs to come here and whatnot. So that, that, I was looking at it, and I just felt like it wasn't right in my mind, so I wanted to share an idea. I know I shared that with Ms. Samick during our conversation yesterday, and just wanted to put it forward and ask to see what the thoughts of the board are.
I think we're complicating it if we do tiers like that. Ultimately, isn't the, I'm trying to find where the language is, but doesn't this go before the CAO for approval? Yeah, yeah.
Yes, CAO and...
So if we want to raise the expense up to 2,000 to make sure everything's covered, I think, you know, we could talk about that. But I'm okay the way that it is right now, and I don't want to overcomplicate it because there's so much of this is about the unknown, and we don't know which candidates we're going to be looking at, but I'm okay with it as is. Supervisor Green?
I'm open to further discussion on what you were talking about. I am looking at draft policy. So as we even consider this, I'm old, but back when I did job seeking, it was not customary that job applicants got reimbursed for their travel expenses.
I've been in HR for 30-plus years, and I've never been in an organization that didn't cover travel expenses, so...
And we've lost a lot.
I think it's important, and we've lost key applicants because we're not paying for, for them to travel out here. We've lost it due to families not coming out here. And if we want a department head or a very hard-to-fill position to come out here, the family needs to come. I mean, it's always going to be, a spouse is going to have to sign on to, to any type of major move, and I think we've lost key applicants. I think we would control the expenses. I mean, and it's, we're traveling 500 miles or more out this direction, and I think it's very important that we cover this cost.
But I'm glad you brought that up, because that's the exact clause I was looking at. It's, it's interesting. We'll fly out a spouse or immediate family member, but only if they're considering a relocation from 500 or more miles away. And we've learned so much since COVID, including how to hold Zoom meetings. We certainly have the capacity to do Zoom. So I hear what you're saying, that customarily, I guess in the government sector, reimbursement for job interviews has been commonly done for at least executive leadership positions, but it didn't roll off the tongue immediately for me. So I do want to be competitive, I want to be responsive to your item. It's just kind of struggling with it right now, including, you know, why set the 500 number? You know, why not 250? And so the, the whole evolution of how wide a net we cast and how much money we pay into that process to get them out here to do in-person interviews, even in the middle of the Zoom revolution.
Well, and we are still doing, the first interview would be via Zoom, and it's if there is interest on both parties in pursuing it further, key positions, I believe you have to see them in person. Sometimes an interview can change completely from Zoom or a telephone call to the actual meeting in person. I think you've all experienced this. So I think when we're considering bringing on a department head or a major position, we really need to see them. And they need to see us. They, they need to see where they're potentially moving to, and if a secondary family member is going to be helping making this decision, they need to come out and see us.
I guess my follow-up question is, would, why would we limit it to the 500 miles then? Because we would want those same family members for shorter recruitments.
Sure. And really, I tried to mirror the existing policy, so if we want to reduce that, I'm certainly very open to making it as easy as possible and to not have this be a barrier to our good hiring practices.
Vice Chair Simon?
Okay. You know, obviously, I would agree too with the, the topic of going from 1,500 to 2,000, but I don't agree with the tiered system either. I think the 2,000, raising it obviously gives us an opportunity, and really that takes us to 2,500 with the 500 for the extra family members. So it's my, my thoughts there. If there's an issue with the 500 or more miles away, maybe we just make a change and say out of state. I think, I don't know, I don't know how big the state of California is, maybe the very tip is 500 miles? We're kind of centralized here.
It's about three, yeah. I think the intent is out of state.
And so that would be...
Out of state, but if we brought somebody from LA, I mean, that's still a significant way to travel. You're going to...
500 miles, right?
Well, true, so...
He's under 500, I'm pretty sure.
Then would agree with striking the mileage? Because again, we don't want it to be a barrier if somebody's traveling from LA or other parts of California.
And I don't have an issue with the 500 miles. I know Supervisor Green brought it up, we can go from there. But I, I definitely think the $2,000, raising that for the applicant, you know, I would definitely agree with that if the board wanted to do it today, but I don't agree with setting up a system. I think that admin does a good job of getting the folks here, you know, talking it over, and I think when you're traveling for a job application, if you have the ability, you're going to keep those costs as close as you can, you know, as possible. So those are my thoughts. I think it's a good thing to do. We've been through this plenty of times, and I completely agree. You need to have your significant other come and look at the area, because that's a big decision-maker. We all experience that. I know local businesses and other things too, even in recruitment. I know we run a large business facility, and, you know, you want to make sure that you get the entire unit out here to look at the environment they're going to be in. We're building our way to have everything here, but we're not there yet.
Supervisor Crandall?
I think the 500 miles, when you think about it, if mileage is the reimbursement rate, within 500 miles, they're going to drive here with their significant other. If they are, I think it says lodging, if they're bringing a significant other, commonly they're going to stay with them if it's a wife or partner or whatever the case may be. And a flight, I think is, when you look at the, is it 500 miles in a circumference? Or is it 500 miles, like the distance-wise, is it like a, does that make sense what I'm asking?
I, again, I kind of tried to mirror our old policy but expand who could use it, so I, I don't necessarily want to get hung up on the 500 miles, because if they're coming from LA, they're going to fly from LA to Sacramento, rent a car, and drive here, because that's the closest airport as opposed to driving, what is it, 11, 12 hours from LA?
But that's what my emphasis was, is just that I understand why the 500 is there.
Yeah. I think previously, when this policy was first brought into place, that made sense, but I kind of agree, thank you for bringing that up, that maybe we should strike the mileage. And I mean, obviously, if they're coming from Santa Rosa, they're not going to be eligible for reimbursement. So I think that would be the only caveat, but I think it would be up to management to explain that, and depending on where the individual is coming from, I mean, they're going to be getting pre-approval, so we'll kind of know this as to what's appropriate. But even if they were coming from a couple of hours away and they're going to stay here two days because they're, they're going to do a round of interviews, you're going to at least have lodging and meals.
Right. And I'm only just answering the question why I think the 500 is there, but if you want to strike it, that's fine too, but I get it. And I do know that I've been, I work with agencies that don't provide travel as well to come out for that, and it's been a difficult situation recruiting because they won't come out if they have to pay on their own. That's just one of those things.
You know, and we've definitely had that situation where we've lost key candidates. We've also had managers who use their own points to fly people out. That seems a little backwards and hinky, and if I'm making a major life decision to relocate with me and my family, if I thought, oh, they're only going to use their points to cover me, it just doesn't, it, it, it makes us seem not where we want to be and not the experience we want to drive. It is a courting process when we're recruiting, and if they think, these people can't even afford to fly me out here, why would they make a major life decision to, to come here?
Yeah. And with the recruiting retention type of situation we have at hand right now, I think it's important that we look at this. The other thing is, is I know that with interviewing, we've been doing more due diligence as to, you know, having these interviews and conducting another round. And I think too, that some of these positions are specific to what the position is. And so I think that when we're in the interview process or the, you know, we're going to be discussing like, well, we need to figure out a way to get this person here, and if we have to adjust, this policy needs to allow some of that wiggle room, I feel, you know, like, so, I'm fine with that.
Yes. I'll share briefly, just in our recruitments for the DCAO positions. I've lost three well-qualified candidates. One because, you know, they didn't want to use the points I was offering because they felt that they couldn't commit because they weren't, we weren't bringing the family out, so that, you know, we lost them. We had two others that, again, you know, informed them that, you know, they'll have to fly themselves out here, and, and, yeah, they ghosted us after that. But we did have one success story, and that's Ben. So, but that, that cost me personally a significant amount of money.
Well, additionally, you were a candidate as a result from a nationwide search, and so what was your perception?
It was the only organization I had applied for where my travel was not paid for.
Okay. Supervisor Spatier?
Yes. Good discussion. I think that I would be against striking it. I think making it more appropriate, because again, if we don't strike it, then if it's 10 miles away, then we can go ahead and pay. If it, I get it that it goes through a process, but that's, in my opinion, way too much discretion versus 150 miles or 200 miles, like that's eligible to drive or whatever. That, that would be better. But I also know you stated, it's not the first meeting, but it doesn't say on there that this is not for first interviews. And I think that it should say on there that this is for the, at least past the first filter of interviews. That way, we're not doing first interviews and paying for people to be here. I know that that would also not be something that is approved, but to me, since it's obviously absurd, why not put that inside the policy itself so that no matter who is in charge of, in your position as CAO to make those types of decisions, that there is no, no change of mind of how this policy should work? I think there needs to be certain guardrails, having a certain amount of miles, 100 miles, 200 miles, 500 miles, whatever it is that we choose, I think is a good thing rather than striking it, and also making sure that this is for the final type of interviews, not for the initial interviews. And it doesn't state anything about that in there.
Yeah, I think under eligibility A, it says, in the case of finalist interviews, when it's talking about the family members.
I missed, I missed the finalist interviews.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I...
I stand corrected.
Yeah, so I think that was...
I think if we changed it to 300 miles, we're looping in Southern California and anyone who should have to fly.
I just think, if you don't mind my arguing with you, something that's realistic of, what would I be willing to drive in one day if it's within the range of driving where it's appropriate to drive? And I think that 300 miles is rough to drive in one day where none of that is eligible. I'm going to want to stay, I want to hang out and check out the place. If it's 150 miles or 200 miles, at that point, that seems more realistic, that you can drive, do the interview, hang out, and go home. Tough day, but if it's any further than that, then there's, it makes you not eligible at all. And again, we're not providing the experience that we want them to have so we can get a yes, if we choose them, that they have that positive experience where they want to say yes.
Supervisor Green?
Interesting discussion. 500, 300, I think that kind of misses the point. It's like, oh, if they're close enough to drive, then we're not going to make them whole for their costs, but only if they catch a flight from X hundred miles away, then we'll do it. So that's kind of mixed messaging there. My suggestion would be, let's just not strike it entirely, but let's bring them out there. Include it in the claim of a candidate considering relocation from outside the county, period. You know, if they're coming from outside the county and we need to finalize an interview and get them here, I don't care if they're driving up from SAC, I don't care if they're flying from, you know, LA, let's reimburse that expense and throw a really wide-open, wide-open recruiting tool. So that's, that's, if we, if we don't strike it entirely, that would be my suggestion. Just anybody considering relocation from outside the county, we're going to make you whole on that finalist interview for any travel expenses you incur.
From Lakeport to LA on maps is 494 miles. So I...
You're good if you're in San Diego.
If we're, yeah, if we're being technical, that might be a problem, but...
I think if you're driving from Yucaya, which is outside the county, you would be expected to, that you were, expenses aren't going to be reimbursed. It's, it's a, we're trying to be more reasonable than we were. So I think some type of mileage there where, I mean, if they were staying for overnight, then we reimburse, you know, lodging, meals, and potentially mileage. and potentially mileage at 150 seems reasonable. But I mean, if you're traveling 50 miles away, is it reasonable to expect us to reimburse you for gas?
I think we just need to figure out what that significant travel is. Supervisor Spatier?
So, I know that I started by overcomplicating it. So, I'd like to offer that we do 2,200 miles. And obviously, the case of finalist interviews was found for me and I missed that, so I appreciate it. And I think I'm good if we change it to that. That seems reasonable to me. Because again, we're trying to make it easier to get a yes.
Yep. All right. I'm going to open it up for the public. I'm not seeing anyone in the chambers or in the Zoom room. We can bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the updated application interview travel expense reimbursement. Oh, sorry. Start over. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the updated application interview travel expense reimbursement policy pending a meet and confer with Lake County Unions with the amendments suggested by Supervisor Spatier.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope this works. All right. So, we have calendars left. Who is ready?
Okay.
Supervisor Spatier?
I'm going to be, I was invited because of some of the questions that I had to go to, kind of checking in, I guess, with the group as well. Was invited to go to a meeting at Career Point Lake on tomorrow. And if that's appropriate for everyone else, since I'm not on the North Bay Alliance, Workforce Alliance of North Bay Committee, but this is more along the lines of the programs that they're offering within Career Point so that I can know better how to connect folks in the community to Career Point. Love to hear if there's any issues with that.
Fine with that, obviously. You know, I know we move around, there's been different iterations. I know the Workforce Alliance of North Bay reported when I was out of town, but absolutely, I think educating ourselves all the time as board members is really important when there's that opportunity. So I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Thank you very much. There's a Middle Creek Project Delivery Team meeting happening also that day on Wednesday. Later on, we are having our ARPA conversation to review where we are with our expenditures and our projects and seeing if we're going to meet the deadlines. Later on, I will be joining PEG TV over at the West Region Town Hall. Again, my goal there is to just help and assist with the technology for the AV unit. We did do the Town Hall over at the East Region Town Hall. There was a little bit of technical difficulties, for some reason, a little buzz in the background. But yesterday, we took two hours to do a demo by ourselves without bringing it to an actual meeting. And we were able to figure out what was done incorrectly. And so, we're looking forward to Wednesday's meeting and making that happen and ironing out the kinks. Thursday, starting off with Judge's Breakfast, I have a CSAC forum as well as a board meeting in Sacramento. Later on that evening, City Council meeting. And then Friday, looks like we're getting prepared for our 19th flight with Cal Wild, who was just here today. And so on Friday, it sounds to me like, I haven't really looked at it, but I think it's just a preliminary conversation on making sure that we're set up for that Saturday. And the 19th, I will also be going to the Movie in the Park. Appreciate all the activities that happen in the park over in Austin Park. And it looks like on Monday, I've got nothing on my calendar except for meeting with our CAO to prepare for our very full agenda on the 22nd. I have no idea.
So, let's see, today, after the meeting, probably this evening, I'll be going to Sacramento for the RCRC Executive Committee. And then, you know, I might have an issue with attending the Middle Creek Project Delivery Team meeting. So, you're going to be there. So, that'll, that'll cover that. Going to rush back and go to a meeting involving the Middle Creek Restoration Project with Robinson Ranchery Leadership. Water Resources will be sending a representative. And then West Region Town Hall tomorrow evening. So, I'll be going to that right after that meeting. Thursday, Russian River Water Forum, it's in Ukiah, so I'll be going to that. And then, not sure if that runs into the Governing Board meeting for AAA. But if it does, I may have a difficult time attending that as well. But, so we may, I may need to email Dina to see who the vice chair could cover in the event that that meeting goes. I think the Russian River Water Forum, it says all day with what was sent to me. So, I know that in one of my announcements that I have, it's, I think it's from like 10 to 2 or 3 most of the time. So, we'll see how it goes. If it's 10 to 2, then I'll jump right on. And our meeting is at actually Lakeport, right? It's at the Office of Ed for AAA. So, yeah, it's at the Office of Ed. So, I might have to join via Zoom since I'll be in Ukiah.
Okay.
So, yeah, the COVID days are over, where you can try to Zoom twice at one time and all of that. So anyhow, Friday, we'll have that meeting with Cal Wild to, you know, talk about the Eel River situation. And then fly on Saturday, doing a flight over Eel River with Cal Wild, is it Cal Wild, right? That's what I have, yeah.
They're the ones organizing.
I have two different schedules on there, like they sent me two different invitations.
I'm everywhere too.
And then back-
I think you're the early flight, I'm the later flight.
Yeah. And then I'll have a meeting with Susan on Monday, and then back here Tuesday.
Real quick, what time is your Russian River Forum?
It is at 10.
Okay, yeah, same time as CSAC, so I can't help you on that.
Oh, no worries. I know I got to be there because the last one we had, I was in Colorado. And I think we all were real schedule heavy, even Pat and Matt. So, yeah, I want to make sure we're there this time. That's it.
Okay. Finishing up the meeting today, whenever it ends, I know we've got some stuff we got to get taken care of in closed session. And then, it sounds like we may do a gender review at some point in that time, so we can get that knocked out. Don't have much on Wednesday, just some constituent calls, trying to get out to a couple of properties that have issues. On Thursday, I know it's the Rural County ESJPA, but Lars Uzietenzos. And I will be traveling to Sacramento to meet with Senator McGuire, another issue. He's doing something for Bill Foltmeyer, our local coach at the state floor. So, I'll be attending that ceremony with his coaching wins over 301. And then Friday, we call the CAO Friday night, you know, the Lake County scrimmage just started, football season's here. And then Pop Warner game's on Saturday. But there is, I don't know if you got an invite, Bruno? There's a barbecue for the celebration for the Lower Lake Days. I'm going to try and make that event, I think, 4 to 7. Just thanking everybody who helped that go off without a hitch. So, we'll be at that, obviously, and then-
I will be there. Somebody said barbecue, so I said yes.
Yeah, I know. It's like, yes. We will see. But then on Monday, we have the Risk Reduction Authority meeting. I know that we're talking about alternates at the Risk Reduction Authority for all partners. I know we've got some time, but-
The location's in the email.
It is in Clear Lake, City of Clear Lake this month. We are moving around to different areas of the communities. I think July was in Middletown, and now we're going to move to Clear Lake. And, you know, we've committed to partners so we can move to four different sites around the county. You know, obviously, you know, I think that's a good step forward, obviously. There are always little things, but making sure that, you know, this is a countywide Risk Reduction Authority that has partners all over. We want to make sure we're trying to move to those facilities that can handle that. So, we are doing that this month. So, all right, that's it.
Thank you. Last Friday, I was able to attend Partners in the Park, put on by Clear Lake Environmental Research Center. Pretty good turnout. Good to see a lot of people doing a lot of good work. Some people from Land Trust, Cal Fire, a lot of the partners did show up. And Clerk is doing some good work for this county and the grants they manage are important. So, it was good to see those people out and about and good to see them continuing the good work that they do. It's like Thursday, Emergency Medical Care Committee is on tap again. Also on Thursday, it looks like they'll be going out to Sutter for a ranking celebration. So, they just got a good five-star rating from CMS, and they are inviting people to come out Thursday at 4:00 PM on the front lawn to basically toot their horn. And we're going to celebrate that with them. And that's about all I have. Really jumping off my calendar, Monday, I will meet with CAO Parker. And that's about it. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I wanted to report out on my trip to Twalomee. It was incredible. The Red Cross sponsored a delegation from Lake County and Butte County. So, NCO, Catholic Charities, myself and the Red Cross Climate Staff went, we drove all day Thursday, went to Sonora, had a dinner with all, both delegations. And then Friday morning, we toured the Community Resilience Center, which just opened this year. It was all grant-funded in partnership with the Twalomee Miwok Band. And they built two community resilience centers. So, they are, they act like community centers, but they're turnkey ready to go for any type of event. So, we got to tour one of the facilities and talk with the project director and work with our delegation on what that looks like. We, for our county, we are about to apply for a planning grant for that through, with the Risk Reduction Authority and with, in partnership with the county. It's really exciting to look at the opportunities. And it's just, it's so incredibly needed. It was really inspiring. And that took up a lot of last week. So, tomorrow, hopefully we'll get a gender review done today. I do have a meeting with CAO and then the ARPA meeting. And Thursday, the CSAC meeting with Alex Padilla. I have a lunch scheduled with Molly O'Brien, to be with After the Fire, Governance AAA Meeting, Community Resilience Center Planning, and that's for the grant that we're working on. And then Cockberry Council in the evening. Friday morning, we have the meeting with Pepperwood to talk about our wildfire fuel mapping. And at the same time, is the Home Hardening Meet and Greet at the NCO Office in Olympic. So, I'm going to be driving around a lot. Then the afternoon, we have our Soda Bay Corridor Evacuation Route Planning Meeting. And then I have a meeting with NCO. And Saturday is opening day for the Clear Lake Youth Soccer League, so I will be there. And then Monday, meeting with CAO and Risk Correction Authority. Do you have a question?
I just wanted to make a quick statement, if you don't mind. You spoke about the RRA. You started off the meeting with talking about what occurred in Maui. We just had a fire on Highway 20 in District 3 yesterday, which was concerning in the, in the area that it was. I'm glad that it wasn't anything bigger. There's been other smaller fires. Just what I see when I go around the county is there's still a lot of work to be done to mitigate the potential for fires. Please do not stop weed eating. Do it in the morning, make it safe. But there's still work to be done to ensure our safety because fire season is not over. Some would say it's never over.
It's just starting.
But it's, it's August and it gets drier and drier until we get some good rains. I know we had a few drops over the course of the past couple of days, but nothing significant enough to change the course of where we are currently. So, please keep putting down the weeds if you can, because there are some areas that have a lot of overgrowth that are nearby residences and whatnot. And yeah, just trying to keep us safe.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, I forgot to, actually, I found out that the meeting is virtual, so I'll be able to make AAA.
Oh, great.
I thought it was in Ukiah, but it's not. It says virtual only, so I'll be able to finish here and go straight to Office of Ed. The other thing I forgot to mention was the RCRC meeting with PG&E for vegetation management to follow up. Matthew was there in person, I was on Zoom. There was lots of questions and comments, frustration with how PG&E is dealing with not only the contractors they're sending out, but also the vegetation responses and complaints that they're getting from constituents because a lot of them are coming straight to us, as you know. And so, we brought that up to them and asked for more action in that capacity. Other supervisors from different counties were frustrated as well, giving the same statements to them. Matthew asked some questions in person that, I think we both felt like we didn't get a lot of answers. But they also talked about Pacific Generation LLC, that was the second part of it. And if you don't know, Pacific Generation LLC is going to be a subsidiary company for Pacific Gas and Electric Company, talking about non-nuclear power generation assets. And so, I know that that's an issue when it comes up for the Potter Valley Project because they're trying to take over or transfer over the assets of clean energy or projects that are, of that sort of hydroelectric type of projects. And so, so we asked questions about that. Patrick also, I mean, I'm sorry, Matthew also asked a question to one of the directors there from PG&E or one of the associates there, whatever you want to call them, and didn't get an answer. So, again, following up, they gave us contact information. I will give that to you as well so we can both stay on them and ask more, the same question over and over again, or even try to invite them again. I don't know, so.
I'm really glad you brought that up because I did follow up with RCRC staff yesterday. And they were incredibly grateful that Matthew showed up in person and asked all of the questions that needed to be asked. So, apparently, I hear the fuels were, the fuels team were not present for that meeting. But they're hoping that they will be there for the next meeting. And it looks like that's going to be on September 1st. No, September 8th. And I'm hoping that you and I and Matthew, all three of us, could go there in person because it seems like there was enough pressure put on at that meeting to bring, bring the top brass for the fuels programs, which is where we still have so many unanswered questions.
I will set it now, so.
Yeah, set it down for now. They won't send out the invite until the week before, but it's just important to get on our calendar right now.
All right.
Thanks for attending that.
Yeah. Matthew is the star.
That's what I keep hearing. Okay. Anything else? All right. Then we will, we will recess until 2:30, when we will go into closed session. And we will, let's see, we'll do 8.1, Public Employee Pursuant Government Code, Public Employee Appointment Pursuant Government Code Section 54957B1, Interviews for Chief Public Defender, Appointment for Chief Public Defender. 8.2, Public Employee Appointment Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, Interviews for Public Health Officer, Appointment of Public Health Officer. Lloyd, are we going to continue with 8.3?
Yes. I'll be requesting to withdraw 8.3 for today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
8.4, do I need to read it if it's been withdrawn? Okay, we'll be withdrawing, Conference with Legal Counsel Decision Whether to Initiate Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 549569D4, One Potential Case. And we will be proceeding with 8.4, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 549569D1, FERC Project Number 77, Potter Valley Hydroelectric Project. 8.5, Public Employee Discipline Removal and Release. And then we will come back into open session. And then we will come back into open session, correct? For 7.2, Consideration of an, an employment agreement between the County of Lake and Noem E C Duhan, M D, Ph D, P, M P H for Public Health Officer Services in the Annually Renewable Not to Exceed Amount of $290,000 plus employee benefits. Item will be taken up following closed session, item 8.2. So we'll keep the Zoom open or start a new zone, new Zoom? Or what's the plan for the public for the afternoon items? It's gonna stay open? Okay.
2:30.
So after we go into closed session at 2:30, complete our items, we'll come back into open session. All right, thank you so much. Okay, welcome back. We will go to our 7.2 item, Consideration of an Employment Agreement between the County of Lake and Noem E C Duhan, M D, Ph D, M P H for Public Health Officer Services in the Annually Renewable Not to Exceed Amount of $290,000 plus employee benefits. Do we have any board discussion on this item? Any members, the public? Anyone in Zoom? Johanna, do we have anyone? Do we have a hand up?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, Betsy.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Betsy Khan. I just have one question. What budget unit will be paying for this contract?
Go ahead.
I was, the budget unit, I cannot give you the number at this time, but it is under Public Health Services Department.
It's under Public Health Services Department, but it does not report to the, to the director?
Correct.
No, that, yes, they directly report to the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Do we have any other hands up in the Zoom room? No one in the chambers? Okay, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Lloyd, I wanna make sure we get it clear, I think we have two actions here, but.
Yes, so we could first take the action that's stated on the memo regarding this item, 7.2, which would be, uh, motion to approve the employment agreement between.
Okay, I got it. So thank you, I just wanna make sure I had them in line there. So, uh, Madam Chair, there's no more discussion. I would like to move to, to approve the employment agreement between the County of Lake and Naomi C. Duhan, M D, Ph D, M P H for Public Health Officer Services in the Annually Renewable Not to Exceed Amount of $290,000 plus employee benefits. Can authorize the Chair to sign? Should I add that or no? It's not on there, I just wanna make sure.
Sure it doesn't hurt. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And, um, Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
For the second motion, uh, just for clarification, I believe I provided the language there already, but the second motion is action taken in open session after closed session under item 8.2, just for confirmation.
So you'll ask the question and then.
Was there any, um, action taken in closed session?
Yes, there is some action to be taken out of closed session, Madam Chair. I would like to move to appoint Naomi Duhan as Public Health Officer effective September 1st, 2023, at $290,000 annually.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, motion passes. And with that, we will adjourn this meeting.